Good morning, we're now calling the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning, thank you Chairman Supervisor Stewart.
Here.
Supervisor Profi McGee.
Here.
Supervisor Lesko joined us remotely.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Galvin.
Here.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We have two items on the agenda today. Number one is petitions hearing for the formation of the proposed hacienda del campo irrigation water delivery district. Madam Clerk, any speakers for this item?
Chairman, I did not receive any request to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll look at the county manager. Do we have anyone here for presentation or not necessary?
Chairman Galvin, no, no presentation necessary.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, this is only giving the, the, the organization permission to start a petition, correct? Is that what we're doing here?
Chairman Supervisor Gallardo, this is, this is actually the Board of Supervisors declaring the formation of the district.
So they've already done?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The petition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider item number one. Is there a motion for the formation of the proposed hacienda del campo irrigation water delivery district?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number two under presentation, Maricopa County Fiscal Year 2026 Recommended Budget. I would like now to introduce our presenters for item number two, which is the presentation of the Fiscal Year 2026 Maricopa County Recommended Budget. I'm going to ask Mike McGee and Kirsten Prindle to please come up. And of course, once you come here to the table, please identify yourselves for anyone listening. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mike McGee and here with me is Kirsten Prindle. And we're going to go over the budget presentation for fiscal year 26.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to add that Supervisor Lesko is online. So we're going to make sure that if she has any questions, that she'll be able to weigh in. And if there's any times where we're going to pause or see if the supervisors have questions, I'll go to her first, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Lesko, does that work?
That works for me, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, go ahead, please.
All right, I believe we're going to begin with a video.
Maricopa County is the nation's fourth most populous county and one of the most fiscally responsible governments in the United States.
We're the largest government in the country without general obligation debt.
With a staff to population ratio of 3.08 per 1,000 residents, our organization runs efficiently, providing critical state mandated services to Maricopa County's four and a half million residents. Services like public safety, public health, and election administration. These services require proper funding and that's the job of the elected Board of Supervisors.
The county system of government is a wonderful structure. It's the absolute perfect level to address and affect change because it's close enough to the people. And at the same time, it's regional.
Every December, the Office of Budget and Finance briefs county leadership on expected revenues and potential budget challenges. Departments are given baseline budgets. Any requests above baseline have to be justified. In January, elected offices and appointed departments that report to the county manager present their budget requests and priorities to the Board of Supervisors at a public meeting. In February, budgets are submitted to the Office of Budget and Finance. Over the next few months, all requests are evaluated in the context of available resources and board priorities. The goal is always a structurally balanced budget with contingencies in place for unanticipated events.
I have no doubt that this board will continue to take on those hard challenges and really be able to address and bring solutions to the people of, of Maricopa County.
Maricopa County budgets conservative revenue estimates. So whether the economy is booming or in the middle of a downturn, the county is still able to meet its mandates and provide necessary services. By April, budget recommendations are finalized. And in May, the Board of Supervisors approves a tentative budget for the coming fiscal year, which starts on July 1st. This budget includes setting the property tax rate. Historically, Maricopa County receives 11 cents of every dollar paid in property taxes, with most property taxes going to local school districts. The board does not control property values, but it does set the rate at which property is taxed. And board members have prioritized lowering the property tax rate in each of the past five years.
People work hard for their money and we need to make sure that their money is being used wisely.
In May and June, members of the public are invited to comment on the tentative budget. Final adjustments are presented in a public meeting in June before the board votes to adopt a final budget, which is posted online for residents to see.
I want Maricopa County to continue to be the envy of the nation as a well-run county and a well-run business.
Budget approval means funds are available for the services citizens need every day. Food inspections, building permits, job training and assistance, senior services, jail operations, criminal prosecution, outdoor recreation, library services, and so much more.
Hey, Mr. Works. How you doing?
How you doing, Gil?
Good, good.
Maricopa County is an efficient government spending less than $1,000 per resident. Some similar sized counties spend three or four times that much. And residents can feel good knowing we're a government that goes above and beyond to help people.
It just isn't like it was just yesterday when I called them to, to start services and here we are two years later.
You've been a great guy and a, and a confidant, you know, somebody you could talk to.
We go out to their, wherever they're at, whether it's senior homes or senior community events. And that's because we want to make sure every voter has the opportunity to get that information so it's accessible for them.
I think it gives a sense of relief to students who are in classes.
So while the budget process may take a while and budget documents may be heavy on the numbers, know that what we're doing is really about you. Getting you the services you need at a reasonable cost. That's why Maricopa County is seen as among the most responsible large governments in the United States. A commitment we intend to keep as we build a stronger Maricopa County.
I promise you that this board will continue to honor conservative principles and be a good steward of your tax dollars.
I'm bidding for that last tone. That's a great video and I think it's really important to have videos like this because it's all about communication and educating our voters and letting our constituents, I'm sorry, our constituents, letting them know that we're working hard to be good stewards of their taxpayer dollars. But at the same time, we have a lot of responsibilities. My favorite line in that video was, "And so much more." I mean, look at all the stuff that we're doing that's in that video and yes, there's so much more. So of course, as a county, we have a responsibility to properly fund all of our mandated responsibilities. But at the same time, there's a way to do it, having a balanced budget. And it's not just cutting tax rates for cutting tax rate sake, just to say it as, as a soundbite or as a talking point. But it's because it's showing that we are really being diligent in terms of being good stewards. And you guys are at the forefront and the vanguard of that, the tip of the spear. And I really want to thank both of you and your entire team because you really understand the ethos of this board going back several years. And of course, this board as it's currently constituted today. So the onset, I want to say thank you and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you Chairman Galvin, really appreciate those comments. In the next few slides, I'll be presenting some highlights and an overview of the recommended budget. And then I'll turn it over to Kirsten, who will walk us through some more of the specifics. Next slide, one more slide. All right, so this slide just highlights some of the FY 26 budget initiatives. First, this recommended budget focuses funding on public safety, retaining employees, and satisfying state mandated payments. It provides flexibility to navigate economic surprises such as a potential downturn or unanticipated costs. Later on, I'll cover the conservative assumptions that we used in preparing for economic surprises. This budget invests in capital and infrastructure. It lowers the overall tax rate. And I want to point, make a few points about that last bullet here for approved compensation. In his chairman's speech, Chairman Galvin asked us to prioritize improved compensation for sheriff's deputies, detention officers, and dispatch operators at the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. And the good news is that we're close to finalizing a compensation package with MCSO. This is a significant investment by the Board of Supervisors and the numbers aren't final yet because we must do this in a sustainable way. We need to stay within the state's expenditure limitation and make sure that we can pay for the increased costs with recurring revenues. But the bottom line is that we will be able to deliver on the chairman's and the board's priority of improved compensation for deputies and detention officers as part of a long-term plan to ensure that we, we, what we pay our deputies and detention officers is competitive. If there's no questions, I'll go to the next slide. The budget process began in January with the board's adoption of the budget guidelines and priorities summarized on this slide. Based on this direction from the board, I'm happy to report the results for each bullet shown here. Number one, we focused on ensuring a sustainable budget that advances the county's mission and strategic goals. The budget supports the county's workforce by focusing on retention and competitiveness in the job market. The budget process required all departments to present new funding requests to the board and all new funding requests went through a thorough review by our office. We reviewed all capital projects to ensure the estimated costs were updated and accounted, accounted for. And for the last bullet, we paid close attention to all budget requests for their impact on the expenditure limitation that was established in the Arizona Constitution. Next slide. These are some of the assumptions we used in our methodology. Regarding the second bullet, the county has a history of budgeting conservatively and that's a reason we've been able to navigate surprises and difficult financial times. We took a conservative approach to our revenue forecasting for several reasons. We've experienced a slowdown in sales tax growth. It was 3.9% in fiscal year 24 and it slowed to 1.9% so far this fiscal year. We don't know what impact the economic uncertainty, inflation, and tariffs will have on consumer demand. And then domestic migration into Maricopa County has been slowing partly due to housing affordability constraints. And for these reasons, we also increased our contingency primarily due to the increased revenue risks and the higher economic uncertainty. And for the last bullet, I want to point out that maintaining two months reserves is a recommended practice for local governments by the Government Finance Officers Association. Next slide. Here's a summary of our fund sources, starting at the top right and going clockwise. State shared sales taxes is the county's largest funding source. This is why our projections are so critical. Committed fund balance represents funds committed to one-time uses such as capital projects, computers, vehicles, and to pay off debts for capital projects and the pension paydown. This funding for committed fund balance was derived primarily from pickup, pickup from prior year savings, miscellaneous revenue like interest expense, and also budget saving pickup. Property taxes makes up about 17% of our sources of funds and it used to be our number one source of funds. But sales, state's shared sales tax took that over. The next one is grants and intergovernmental agreements. Next, permits, patient revenue fees and charges. And then the slice that says sales tax, that's jail, the jail excise tax, which is nearly $300 million, followed by state shared vehicle license taxes and highway user revenues and other miscellaneous.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor Stewart. Thank you. A quick question on the shared state sales tax. What's the projection for the budget for the state this year? And is there any risk to that falling below their projections?
It's set at 2% and that was discussed with our economist, Jim Rounds. He wanted us to follow a fairly conservative projection going forward for this fiscal year. And we felt that given the recent sales tax revenue reports, that would be in line.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you Supervisor.
All right. Uses of funds, this summarizes our budgeted use of funds. Public safety, this includes several different offices. One is sheriff's office, probation services, county attorney, superior and justice courts, planning and development, and public fiduciary. Note that public safety is a larger part of the pie this year. It also increased from the percentage last year.
And Mike, I just want to point out, one of the things that I've experienced when I travel my district is when I show this chart, which is very illustrative for folks. Some folks have approached me afterwards and goes, "Well, I cannot believe that Maricopa County only spends this little on education." And so that's a good reminder that people always ask good questions. And so it's an opportunity for me to explain to them what this means. So state, state spending on education comes from the state government and also from your school districts. Can you please explain quickly what is the role of Maricopa County vis a vis education? And why this number seemingly is small, but it reflects our responsibilities and what, what we're in charge of?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So the school superintendent's office, they're not mandated by the state to operate schools. And so that's why, that's one reason why that number is so small. But they are mandated to provide support for school districts within Maricopa County.
All right, so this number is not a reflection of our policy views of education. It's a reflection of our mandated responsibilities.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to health, welfare, and sanitation. This consists of, I'll go back to that previous slide, yeah, thank you. This consists of air quality, animal care, animal care and control, environmental services, human services, medical examiner, and public health. And then general government, this is a, a part that we also get a lot of questions about. What is this general government? Well, this consists of the assessors office, treasurer's office, recorder's office, elections department, Board of Supervisors, and county administration. Highways and streets, this is our Department of Transportation. And then culture and recreation is our parks and recreation, followed by education that we just discussed, the school superintendent's office. Next slide. Here we show the total budget amounts since fiscal year 2023. The budget steadily decreased from nearly four, four and a half billion to about 3.9 billion last year. This coming fiscal year, there's a slight increase of 1.65%. This is primarily due to increasing costs due to inflation such as goods, services, and also wage inflation. Also, state mandated costs increased about 4.38%, which is a large part of our budget. We'll talk more about this on an upcoming slide. Also investments in public safety and employee retention and increases in some department budgets, which will be discussed more in detail by Kirsten. Any questions on this slide before we move forward? Next slide. This graph helps illustrate revenue growth from state shared sales tax, jail tax, and vehicle license taxes. Starting with the dark blue bars, state shared sales tax. Starting at the end of FY 24, the county began to see slowing revenue growth, growth from sales tax revenue with some months experiencing negative growth. Then we started to see rebounding growth in last December. We met with our county economist in March about the revenue forecast and he cautioned that we need to remain conservative in our revenue budget. The fiscal year 2026 budget assumes 2% growth over the fiscal year 25 forecast. This is also in line with the state finance advisory committee forecasted growth of 2.8%. And for the vehicle license tax revenue, that has been coming in at around 3.8% growth year to date. But we have, we have budgeted the growth at 1% in fiscal year 26 due to the volatile nature, nature of this revenue source. Next slide. This graphic shows how the property tax rate has been going down over the past five years, thanks to the board, to the actions of the board. Note that there's a slight decrease to the overall tax rate. Next slide. This graphic shows how the county's primary property tax levy for fiscal year 26 will be 269.5 million below the maximum levy allowed by law. As you can see, the last few years, we have moved aggressively down below the maximum levy.
I'm going to stop you there for a second, just to point out, this is a point of pride for Maricopa County and for this board. I've gotten used to the number of 257ths and I'm going to happily get used to the number of 269.5. And what I explained to folks is that you could have an entirely different board come in tomorrow and raise taxes by 269.5 million dollars. So we talk about policy choices and decisions that are being made on a single, on a, on a daily basis. This exactly is it. This is just a stunning statistic in a good way because it reflects that we're able to provide fabulous, really good services. But we're doing it at nearly $270 million less than what we could statutorily levy on the taxpayers. Which means this allows people to keep money in their pockets and allows them to do what they need to do out there in the public, whether that's running their own company or making sure they have enough food on the table to provide for their kids because it's so hard, especially these days, especially in light of the inflation we've seen over the last five years. So I just wanted to stop and point this out. This is a, a statistic in a slide that this board is extremely proud of and, and thanks to you for showing it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll point out too that most counties don't keep their levy this low. Next slide. This graphic shows that for fiscal year 2025, the county's primary property taxes made up about 11.19% of total property taxes. And this will be updated for fiscal year 26, once the tax levy is adopted by the board in August. Next slide. This slide summarizes some of our mandated mandated state payments. About one-fifth of our operating budget is for mandated state payments. And as mentioned earlier, state mandated payments increased 4.38% over last year. Altics or Arizona Long-Term Care System, that can still increase during FY 26 beyond what we show here. Kirsten will speak about that in a couple of slides. But with that, if there's no other questions?
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Lesko.
Yeah, sorry. I have a question for Mike on the additional state shifts of over 6.7 million for the juvenile corrections payment. Could you let the public know what that's about and how it compares to other counties?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Lesko. This is mandated, this was mandated several years back and it was originally all counties that had to pay to help support the state's juvenile corrections facility. And a few years ago, they started not requiring that from other counties. We're actually the last county that is still required to make this payment to the state.
And Mr. Chairman and Mike or Jen, do you know why, like Pima County got out of it in 2024, I think? So are we making efforts to get out of this mandated payment because it's a state corrections?
I'll defer to the county manager for that question.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Lesko, yes. Every year, it's a priority for us down at the legislature to have this cost shift removed. And I believe it was last year that Pimas was removed. But it still remains that the legislature has not decided to shift this cost back to the state. But it continues to be a priority, priority for us down at the legislature.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor Stewart. I think it's a great question. Do you know why? Did it? Oh, oh, hold on Supervisor Lesko, we cannot hear you. She's trying to talk. Can you hear us Supervisor Lesko? They're taking a break. We're going to disconnect the Supervisor? Okay. Okay, we'll take a minute recess. Yep, okay, thank you, we're going to take a little break, thank you.
It's been forever. I voted no on that, by the way, when I was there. I voted no on that. That's how long it's been. It's been, I was there. That's how long it's been.
Because we had a slide, when we do a review of the county's first, and we provided a wide, I mean, she's going through, and maybe just not rid of it for the public, and then they choose the statute of probation.
I remember that. That was after me, though. That was after. Yeah, that was after. Because it was, it was, they got rid of everyone except, I thought, Pima and us, Pima and us, and then...
And the statute of the population.
Yeah. Oh, we're all talking.
Hello Supervisor Lesko?
Yes, I see you again.
Okay, thank you, we can hear you now.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back from recess. Supervisor Lesko, anything to add or follow up, or any other questions on that topic?
I don't know where I was cut off. So my question was, are we doing, making any legislative efforts to try, next year to try to, or this year, I guess, in the state budget, to try to get out of this 6.7 million dollars we're paying for the state juvenile corrections payment?
Okay, County Manager Porcorsky, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, it is a county legislative priority. It is also a priority of the County Supervisors Association for this cost shift to be removed from Maricopa County. And we are currently proposing a phased-out approach where, over the course of a few years, that this cost would be reduced, and then ultimately, it would be back as the state's cost.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad we're making that as a priority since all of the other, I mean, this happened during the recession, right? The state shifted the cost burden onto the counties, all the counties, is my understanding. And then, it was quite some time ago, if I remember right, that most of the counties didn't have to pay it anymore. And then last year, Pima County didn't have to pay it anymore, and so Maricopa County is the only one that's currently helping to pay for this state cost.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Lesko? That is correct.
Thank you Supervisor Lesko. Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. That kind of answered my question. Start communicating with our legislators a little bit. If I get some help on this.
Absolutely.
That allows us to invest more where we need to provide services. Thank you.
For sure. Supervisor Gardo.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So just hypothetically, that's, I mean, what happens should the legislature not be able to pass a budget this year? I mean, we're all down, we all know people, we meet with all of them on a regular basis, we have these discussions, and that's a real, real possibility, more now this year than ever before, that come July 1st, there's no state budget. What happens to us in terms of state share revenues, all that stuff? How does that play into how we move forward?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Gardo, that is one of the reasons why the board has a strategic priority to have a reserve, so that we can continue to pay the bills until the state gets their budget passed.
That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Regarding the mandated state payments, Supervisor Lesko already addressed the cost shifting for juvenile corrections. You had indicated that the Altex number could go up. Do you have an idea of how much, and are the others firm numbers or not? What could happen, what could go sideways there?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Brophy McGee, yes, it could go up an additional 9 million, if I have that correct, but Kirsten, do you want to help clarify on that?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Brophy McGee, we use the JLBC baseline amount in our budget this year, which was a 5.8 million dollar increase. The governor's budget had an additional 9 million dollars included, and there is a potential every year for the legislature to pass provider rate increases. And so the Altex payment typically becomes part of budget negotiations, which is why we do not know the final amount until after the state adopts their budget. The access payment should be final. Maricopa County actually gets a small reduction in their access payment every year as a result of negotiations to take over the full cost of adult and juvenile probation, and Arnold v Sarn is an automatic increase of 5% every year.
Thank you. One point I want to make, here you have in bold totaling 383.6 million dollars, or 19.1% of the general fund operating budget. So we talk about all the things that we have to do, and all the good things we do in terms of saving money, this means right out of the cannon, 20% of, or 19% of our budget's already spoken for.
Correct.
Yep, okay, absolutely amazing. Thank you. Mr. Chair. Yes, Supervisor Stewart.
On that 5% for the Arnold versus Sarn, is that 5% in perpetuity?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Stewart, as far as I know, it is in perpetuity. It was a lawsuit against the county alleging that the county was not providing good community-based health services, and so we sign a contract with access every year to include the 5% increase, and it has continued every year.
That could get very large very quickly at 5% a year. Is there a possibility that our inter-goves could work on amending that, or how would that work?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Stewart, it's a settlement in the result of the Arnold v Sarn lawsuit. So right now, there isn't a lot of room from a legislative perspective.
So it just continues?
Yes, and it has been since 1981 was when the class action lawsuit was brought against the county.
Is there, is there any relief from that? Like, are there any, is that an answer or a question for the County Attorney's Office, I would imagine?
Yes, I would believe that is more of a question.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. The chart on this slide shows the budgeted positions from fiscal year 2010 to the fiscal year 26 budget. Overall, the number of positions is increasing by 85 to a total of 15,147 positions. This captures changes that occurred during fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26 budget development. One important thing to point out is while the number of positions is increasing, the staff-to-population ratio is at its lowest point at 3.08 staff per 1,000 residents. The increase to the number of positions is driven by departments dedicated to public safety. Adult probation received funding for 36 probation officers during fiscal year 25 as a result of increasing caseloads. County attorney had funding set aside in fiscal year 25 for new positions that they utilized to create attorneys and support staff for internal promotions and better distribution of workload. In addition, in addition, they received funding in fiscal year 26 for 10 reduction specialists and a senior attorney for probate matters. MCOSO created 13 positions in the Professional Standards Bureau to handle investigations for compliance with the Melendros order, and 25 new detention service officer positions to assist with the administrative duties of detention officers during fiscal year 25. Next slide, please. On this slide, I have potential state budget impacts to Maricopa County's budget. We just wanted to include the jail excise tax bill, which has now been signed by the governor. This is the first step in the process to renewing the county's jail excise tax. Next, the tax will go to the voters for approval in 2026. As shown in prior slides, the jail excise tax is estimated to bring in 288 million dollars in revenue in FY26, and makes up 7.29% of the county's total revenue.
I'm going to stop you there for a second and just highlight, pat ourselves on the back here regarding the jail excise tax. The legislation that we achieved here with the recent signing by Governor Hobbs is a substantial result for Maricopa County, but it's a team, it's not just the five Board of Supervisors sitting here in front of you. I really want to take this time right now to say thank you to our Government Relations Team, who are the quarterback of all of this, but also want to say thank you to all of my colleagues, Mr. Gardo, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Brophy McGee, Ms. Lesko, and County Manager Porcorsky. This was a substantial result for the county, really important to set us up for the next few decades, and really want to appreciate and show appreciation for our sheriff, Jerry Sheridan, our county attorney, Rachel Mitchell. When we talk about Maricopa County working as a team, and while all the electeds who don't choose each other but are chosen by the voters, working as a team, that's really important and key, and we are all moving in the same direction to obtain this result. So I just want to say thank you to everyone working on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like the staff to detail for the public if the jail excise tax is not continued by the voters, what kind of dollar amount are we talking about, and what percentage of all of the operations of the jails relies on that jail facility's excise tax?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Lesko, the jail excise tax or public safety funding tax brings in approximately 300 million dollars a year. The county does not have any other sales tax besides this tax. So this, in order to recover those funds, it would be looking at a property tax increase, which you can see even in the maximum tax, it does not come to 300 million dollars, and that is, I think, approximately half of the funding that that gives, so.
And thank you, Mr. Chair and Ms. Porcorsky, sorry. What, when did this jail excise tax go into effect? And I just don't remember. How long has it been in effect, and how long are we asking to extend it for?
Nineties.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Lesko, Kirsten probably knows the exact date, but it was in the 1990s, and so we're looking for a 20-year extension.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Altex mandated payment, which we had discussed on previous slides. The amount is not final until the state finalizes their budget, so this will be an item that the county will be watching once the state is working on their budget. Next, there are two bills related to business personal property tax exemptions. One bill would completely eliminate business personal property tax that is locally assessed, and the other would increase the business personal property tax exemption to 500,000. Both bills would have an impact on the county's property tax revenue. The bills are currently not moving, but it's our understanding they could be part of a budget conversation. Finally, there's a bill that will lower the state's sales tax rate from 5% to 4.93%. The estimated impact to our state shared sales tax revenue is 10.9 million. In addition, our jail tax is defined as a percentage of the state's rate, so there would be an additional impact of 3.9 million. Since this would also impact state revenues and the revenue growth is slowing, we are hopeful this will not pass.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't know when she was done. Can you tell me, Kirsten, how much money we're going to be impacted with if they eliminate the business personal property tax exemption?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Lesko, we had done an estimate when this came through about a year ago, and it was about 18.4 million dollars. Increasing the cap was just under 2 million dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Mr., I'm sorry.
Supervisor Gardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just before we go to our next slide, I just said this is going to bug me, but the term jail facility excise tax, I really think this is, this is more than just, just our jails. This is public, I know Jen Porcorsky mentioned it right now, just, it is public safety. There is so much more than just a jail facility. So I don't want folks to walk away thinking it's just about the jails. No, yeah, the jails are part of it, but there are so much more that is tied to this than is just our jail facilities. So, I mean, as we, as we talk to our constituents, and we talk to the folks in our district, this is much, much, much bigger than just a jail, and all the different avenues that are tied to it as well.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Gardo, that is correct, and that's a great point. The tax includes jails, but also includes probation, correctional health services, and services to transition from the jail back to and services to transition from the jail back to the community.
Next slide, please. On this slide, we have included the general detention fund county-wide budget impacts for retirement, telecom and radio charges and risk management charges, since we do not include the impact on each department's slide. The retirement cost is decreasing by $31.8 million as a result of the pension and contributions approved by the Board of Supervisors. In addition, telecom and radio charges are increasing by 2.6 million and the risk management charges are increasing by 5.1 million. Next slide, please. Next, I'll be going over each of the department's slides. We include a slide for every elected official and appointed departments that received additional general and detention fund funding. The assessors' office general fund budget is recommended at $34.4 million, an increase of 99,000 or 0.29%. The operating budget for the legal class verification program is recommended at $181,000. The non-recurring budget of 1.2 million is funding received in a prior year that is being carried forward to fiscal year '26 for the assessors AA Gamma system development and consulting services, digital-first customer initiatives, and temporary valuation relief program clerk positions. Next slide, please.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to the previous slide. You don't have to show it. But it was the net departmental retirement decrease of about $32 million. And I just want to applaud the previous Board of Supervisors for their wisdom on paying down the pension debt and, and let the public know that it was a wise thing to do. And now we're saving money from it. So thank you.
Thank you.
The clerk of the Superior Court General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $51 million, which is an increase of $626,000 or 1.24% over the prior year budget. The budget includes new funding of $751,000 to support personnel costs due to declining grant revenue and rising personnel costs in special revenue funds. It also includes data center server licensing and support and increased contractual rates for armed security services. Next slide, please. The constable's general fund operating budget is recommended at $5.5 million, which is an increase of $383,000 or 7.5%. Constables receive funding in January to bring up all the constable salary to the maximum of the salary range set in statute. Next slide. The county attorney general fund operating budget is recommended at $133.4 million, which is an increase of $440,000 or 0.33%. The county's attorney's office received $3.5 million in funding in the fiscal year '25 budget for new positions, as discussed on the previous FTE slide. The fiscal year '26 budget includes $670,000 for 10 reduction specialist positions and $196,000 for a senior probate attorney position. Next slide. The county school superintendent general fund operating budget is recommended at 3.4 million and the detention fund operating budget is recommended at $364,000. The recommended budget includes $200,000 in one-time funding to develop a program for professional development services. Next.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you. So it is my understanding from Superintendent Shelley Boggs that she wants to use the $200,000 for professional development training for school board members. Is that your understanding as well, Kirsten?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, the county school superintendent presented to us that they would like to develop professional development for school board members, teachers, and school administrators.
Well, good. And so I, I think that this is one-time money, is my understanding, and we'll see how it goes. But I have talked to school board members who would like an alternative to the, the school, what's it called, SBA? What is it called again? I'm sorry, what are they?
Madam Vice Chair.
It's the ASBA, Arizona School Boards Association.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And so I, I think this is a wise investment and hopefully it works well. And with that, I yield back.
Thank you.
The adult probation general fund operating budget is recommended at $96.7 million, which is an increase of 1.7 million or 1.76% over the FY '25 budget. The detention fund operating budget is recommended at $53 million, which is a decrease of 84,000 or 0.16%. As mentioned on the FTE slide, adult probation received funding during fiscal year '25 for probation officer positions due to rising caseloads. Next slide. The general fund operating budget is recommended at $27.2 million, which is a decrease of $264,000 or 0.96%. The detention fund operating budget is recommended at $45.6 million, which is an increase of 2.3 million or 5.37%. New funding of 1.45 million was included in the detention fund budget for additional overtime expenditures in order to respond to population increases in the detention center and cover unanticipated employee leave time. The request was partially offset by $250,000 to shift more general fund expenditures to the fee fund as the revenue has increased over the prior year. Next slide. The Superior Court General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $138 million, which is a decrease of 597,000 or 0.43%. The decrease is a result of the branch reallocating funding between the departments based on their internal administrative cost allocation methodology. Superior Court received additional funding of $401,000 for six courtroom assistants to manage the increased filing volume in family court cases to ensure prompt and efficient resolution of cases. The branch's request for funding was partially offset by a shift of general fund expenditures to the fee fund of $250,000 and a vacancy savings adjustment of $252,000. Next slide. The Justice Court's general fund operating budget is recommended at $28.3 million, which is an increase of 420,000 or 1.5% over the FY '25 revised budget. The table on the slide compares Justice Court's data for fiscal year '24 and '25 over the same time period. Overall filings are up 6%. Next slide. The Recorder's Office General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $12.8 million. The Recorder's Office portion of the primary and general election cycle budget is recommended at 5.2 million. The funding is for the primary election in 2026, including costs for staffing, printing, mailing, and postage costs for ballots and training supplies and services.
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. And I don't know if this would be the appropriate place to ask this question, but as we are all aware, we've not yet reached an agreement with Recorder Heap on the shared services. So if we are not successful, it's my understanding it would result in massive cost increases for duplicative and redundant costs. In other words, both recorder elections doing the same types of things in the conduct of elections, thus making them inefficient, but we still want them to work. So do we have any estimates, Mr. Chair, County Manager, on what those costs might be and whether or not they're one-time or ongoing?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Brophy McGee asks Assistant County Manager Zach Sheera if he has any estimates.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself to the board.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Zach Sheera, Assistant County Manager. And Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, yes, we've, we've done some initial estimates here. And of course, these are conservative estimates since we've not really had a chance to dig in to the most recent SSA proposal from the Recorder. But, you know, part of this proposal, and of course, we'll get into an executive session later, sends us back into a statutory framework where we're sort of responsible just for what the statute calls for each side to do. And so because of that, we had a general understanding of what that cost would be based on what it costs us to do it currently. And so what we have right now is somewhere between $11 and $13 million in one-time capital costs. We have about $1.8 million in ongoing costs. And then almost $900,000 would be added to the ELE-1 budget for costs that they would now be separately responsible for instead of together in a shared services agreement.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Zach, what was the last number?
Excuse me, almost $900 million. $900,000, sorry, excuse me. It'd be a very expensive election.
I was going to walk right out of here.
We don't have it.
And, and that was ongoing or one-time as relates to election?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, it's the ELE-1 budget, so that's every two years for the election cycle.
Okay, and again, since we appear to have taken some steps backwards. Madam County Manager, Mr. Chairman, in the event a non-agreement should occur, how would we handle it in our budget structure? Would we have to go back and raise taxes? Would we have to go back and cut? What would we do?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, we would have to cut. We would have to take a look to see what other areas we would have to cut the funding for. We are at the limit right now of our expenditure limit and of our, what we are projecting as our revenues for this upcoming fiscal.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor Stewart. Yeah, you can hang out for a second. So as it relates to the budget, so the hypothetical, I think that we just kind of went through was if we don't come to an agreement, what items would we duplicate where the Recorder and us would do the same thing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, that's a great question. Where we would end up duplicating is in the in-person voting aspect of elections administration. So in-person early voting under statute is a responsibility of the Recorder. Historically, under the last few agreements, that's been delegated to the board. And the board has taken care of all of in-person voting because we want one consistent voting, in-person voting experience from E-minus 27, that first day of early voting, to Election Day. And so it's a seamless, continuous process. But in statute, the board is only responsible for emergency voting that weekend prior and for day of voting on Election Day. And so other counties do it differently, where they have the Recorder set up very few early voting sites for that 27-day period. And then the Board of Supervisors only handles Election Day. And so we would have to have two completely separate systems, separate machines, separate warehousing to accommodate for. We're currently at our max facility capacity at McTech. So in terms of adding machines and staff for the Recorder to take on this responsibility, that would go above and beyond our current capacity. So just all these, you know, underlying costs that would, we would incur if we split out in that manner.
So in reality, that's probably not going to be an option for us, right? We wouldn't want to duplicate the same services from the Recorder to us. Now, because statutorily, it's kind of defined. But what you said was the Recorder delegated that responsibility to us. And now the Recorder wants that back or still wants us to do it?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, in the latest proposal, the Recorder wants that responsibility back.
Okay, that wasn't what I understood the original discussions to be about. So that's, so that's new information.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, that's correct. And I don't want to get outside of the budget agenda item and get it, you know, we'll have an executive session this afternoon.
I understand. I think he's still within the budget discussion. So I think Supervisor Stewart's on the right path here.
That is correct. We, that is the latest proposal from the Recorder.
So the common sense solution here is not to duplicate efforts. So we've got to figure out how to make that work, right? Because one, that's the responsibility of us to figure out. Two, it's financially responsible to figure that out. So I think we need to, to, to look at this and move forward with what makes sense. At the end of the day, right, we're, we're only concerned about the voter, right? And making sure they have a great experience and that we have a best-in-class election. And so however we can make that happen, we will. Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Just a quick follow-up on Mr. Stewart's original question, which was a good one. What other duplications besides the 27-day in-person, early-voting systems, machines, and staff would we be looking at?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, it primarily centers around the early, in-person aspect. But if you drill down, you know, there's the logistics and warehouse management, recruitment and training for all the temporary workers that now they would be responsible for, for early in-person voting. And then there's everything down to just minor, you know, capital costs that it takes to run a warehouse or a facility, a forklift, box trucks, you know, separate election management system equipment. And so once you get into all of those details, it starts to add up.
And so, Mr. Chair, I think final clarifying questions. So the temporary workers imagined under this redundant effort would be the result of us going to statutory corners and not clarifying where we can cooperate and exchange and blend services. But those temporary workers are in the one-time costs, the 11 to 13 million, or are they ongoing?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, those are in the ELE-1 costs because that is what it takes to, that is our separate budget allocated for our every-two-year elections. And Kirsten can put it more eloquently if you need.
Thank you. Please. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Brophy McGee, we have an elections reserve that we use to fund our primary and general elections, which is what we call the ELE-1 budget. However, if those costs were to continue to increase because of the shared services agreement, the board would need to allocate additional funding into that budget. And it's currently a $13.2 million operating transfer. We used one-time funds this year to right-size the reserve because we were short on operating funds this year. But if this was an ongoing expenditure, we would need to evaluate that in the next fiscal year.
So, Mr. Chairman, I am getting there. So it would go from being a one-time right-sizing, as you call it, to an ongoing, which is always the hardest type of funding to come up with. And we can't, Madam County Manager, go back and revisit our taxing structure. Or we can't go back and come up with additional revenues. We have to do with what we have at what point.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, right now, with the uncertainty moving forward with some of the revenue estimates at the state being estimated down, I think we would have to definitely cut, if I'm understanding your question correctly. Yes, we would definitely have to make cuts. I don't see additional revenues available to make up the additional money.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, if I might add, once the board adopts the tentative budget today, we cannot increase the budget after today. That is our final set budget in statute.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Supervisor Stewart. Yeah, as a board, though, we can come back and we can do, we could have a special meeting if we needed to for a budget amendment, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, we would only be able to shift funds among our available resources set in the fiscal year '26 budget. Once it is adopted today, statute says that we cannot increase the budget above this amount.
Gotcha. I want to kind of step away from the idea that we're going to do duplicative efforts. We're, we're going to get to a place where we have a common sense solution on how to do this. And if, I like the phrase, right, if we have to go to our statutory corners, then, then that's what we'll do in order to run the elections. But unfortunately, I don't think we've got the finances to be able to do duplicative. So we need to be like, like looking forward into how we don't do that. And then the other question is, we do have a contingency fund with the county that we could draw on if we needed to, if there was an emergency or, you want to, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, we do have a contingency fund. Some of the unknowns that we've gone over in this budget will be coming out of that contingency fund. So I would say there's not a lot of room in contingency right now.
Thank you, and I appreciate this. It's good for us to kind of weigh this out, and Supervisor Brophy McGee brings up some good points, good questions, so I appreciate the follow-up. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, and then just to let you know, Supervisor Lesko has some questions as well.
Thank you. Statutory corners means these increases. It's not, we'll just do that and get past whatever it is we're in. It means that we're gonna do these duplicative expenses and costs, some of which, a significant number of which may become ongoing, which then, all of which this results in budget cuts to the current year. So we are in a place where that's the option we're looking at absent any agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Stewart. Can you clarify on that? So if the recorder is asked for early voting, right, which is statutorily under his purview, that has been delegated to us, would that duplicative cost still happen? We wouldn't do early voting anymore, right?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, the reason it's duplicative is because he would need to have a whole new set of equipment to run early in-person voting. We would not be able to logistically set up our 260 sites. If his early in-person equipment was deployed, he would also need a warehouse and a staff to manage that equipment. So if we're having a bifurcated system of early in-person voting and in-person Election Day voting, you have to have two separate teams to administer that, including the equipment. So that would be the duplicative cost. Plus, when it comes to us administering early in-person voting, we have economies of scale that we achieve by taking care of both early in-person and Election Day, and we have the ability to set up in a phased approach all of those 260 locations for Election Day. And so now, if we're relegated to doing that in the few days leading up to Election Day, we have to expand our team in order to accomplish the logistical hurdles that it takes to set up for one day of voting.
Okay, so I just want to be clear on this because I may be getting lost in the simplicity of this. We have early voting locations that we put our machines at, right? Then we have day-of voting. Those machines would have to be duplicated. How does it work now?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, right now, we phase in our early voting plan into Election Day.
Okay.
And so we start with 12, and then we go up to 80, and then we go up to 160, and then we go up to 260. And so we have a small and agile team that is setting up in-person voting as we go, instead of having in-person early voting administered in a separate, by a separate group, and then in-person voting administered with a separate group of machines for a separate system for in-person voting on Election Day.
And why wouldn't the recorder be able to do that if that were to move? I don't understand.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, well, if we're going to our statutory corners, then he would be responsible for just early in-person. We would be responsible for emergency on Election Day.
Okay. And so we wouldn't be able to use the same equipment. And why is that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, there's a number of reasons. One, we would potentially not be coordinated on where our in-person locations are between early and Election Day.
But we could.
We could, in theory. We would have to ensure that chain of custody, other aspects of how those machines are used, treated, maintained, are the same as they're transferred from early in-person to Election Day.
We could do that, too.
And then, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, the number, how we would have to, you know, depending on how many he sets up for Election Day, it would be tough for us to logistically take that same number and set it up into the 260 that we would need on Election Day. In theory, if we went to statutory corners, this could happen, but it would require a level of coordination that wouldn't exist if we didn't have an SSA agreement. So I think that's the problem with the statutory corners, is that assumes that we're not working together. The assumption in SSA is that we are working together. And so I think that's why we have to assume that this is split and separate and not a coordinated effort.
Well, let's assume we'll get to a resolution on the SSA, because this is giving me a headache. Thank you.
Good question, Supervisor Stewart. Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One quick question. I want to follow up on the last thing that Supervisor Stewart said. And how long has it been, Zach, that the Board of Supervisors has picked the early voting locations, in-person voting locations, that now in the recorder's latest SSA proposal, he wants to take over?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, since the 2018, we then called it Elections Operations Agreement, the Board of Supervisors has had some sort of role in choosing and then administering those early in-person voting locations, and that has remained up through the most recent election in 2024.
Okay, thank you. My next question is just for the staff, Kirsten, to explain to the public kind of what you explained to me on certain issues of not only the recorder's budget, but the Elections Department budget. I believe you told me that some areas are going to decrease because in the fiscal year '25 budget, there was both a primary and general election, but in the fiscal year '26 budget, there is only a major primary election. Did I understand that correctly?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, that is correct. So if the public is looking at a comparison of the recorder and the elections budgets to the prior-year budget, they will see an overall decrease because last year, the funding that went towards the primary and general election were significantly higher because it was a primary and general election during a presidential year. In fiscal year '26, the budget only includes funding for the 2026 primary election. Thank you for that clarification, and I yield back.
Thank you. So Zach, outlining the numbers that you gave, the three different numbers, that total could be up to $15 million?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It would be split between one-time and ongoing, but that's the total of those numbers.
And this would be the recommendation for us, I guess there's like a risk management factor here, right? Like, yes, the recorder's office could work in conjunction with our elections team on a smooth transition from early in-person voting to actual Election Day in-person voting. But it sounds like what our team is saying is that, well, we can't just rely on hope. We're gonna have to somehow budget for, and we use this word loosely, a worst-case scenario in terms of budgeting, just that in case there's no formal agreement, as there is no formal overall agreement, if there's no formal agreement on that in terms of a transition, that we're gonna have to appropriate those monies just in case this is what it's gonna have to cost us.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay. And then County Manager Pirkorsky, when we hear this number of $15 million, there are several big initiatives that are really important to the board, but we're also hearing discussion about the expenditure limit. Are there several potential big initiatives for the board that they wouldn't be at risk if we have to find $15 million because we're not able to get an operating agreement with another elected official?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we would have to take a hard look at our budget this year to determine where those cuts would come from. It would be a combination of operating and capital, as Assistant County Manager Shira mentioned, that there are both costs. And so we have on, you know, the capital side, we have, you know, a new animal control facility, we have facilities for the sheriff's office, and, you know, with the improvements also with the Jail Master Plan, we'd have to take a look at those capital costs. And then on the operating side, we have some significant initiatives, including increased compensation for sheriff's deputies and detention officers, and also other priorities throughout the departments, both appointed and elected.
Okay, so those would all be on the table?
We, Mr. Chairman, we would take a look at our entire budget and above baseline requests for next year. And if I'd also add to what Mr. Shira said, I believe Pima County does different early day and same-day voting. And Pima County has a very small footprint on early voting, but I believe the way they operate is two separate systems. And so I believe that is why Mr. Shira is presenting this as an estimate, assuming that is how it would operate here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shira.
Mr. Chairman, just one point of clarification. I said the 2018 EO is when the board started administering early in-person. It was the 2019, so just for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, just to throw it out there. And I hear it all the time, and Maricopa County being compared to Pima County or any other county, I hear us being compared to Florida and Texas and everything else. Maricopa County is very unique because of our size. We're the fourth largest county, I don't know, like two-point-something registered voters, you know, a good, probably 90% or so are gonna vote early. It's very unique. So the idea of trying to compare us to Pima or anyone else is really, it's just not fair. It's not accurate. Elections is so complex, and it is. And the shared service agreement is so important. It really is, because both functions go together. So the idea of us going in our separate corners is really unjust to the voters, to the citizens of Maricopa County. We really do need a shared service agreement. We need the recorder to come in and really negotiate realistically to be able to come up with a process that is, that is good for Maricopa County and the voters here. So it's real important. I know this department. It is very difficult. It is very complex. Everyone needs to be working together in order for us to be able to have a successful election in 2026.
Thank you. Supervisor Stewart.
I was commenting under my breath. It was good timing when he said the recorder has to come, and he walked in the door. It was almost like they timed it up. But good to see a recorder.
Okay. Kirsten, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair.
Just to follow back up on contingencies and building our budget, because this process has been going on since before I got here, does the contingency or the worst-case bases, I'm trying to figure out, it's one thing to say, yeah, we're there and we can assume this and this, but it's another thing to say at the last minute, we didn't get there, now we gotta go back and do this. How long-range is your contingency planning? And the question I was actually gonna ask, which is kind of related, is the phase-out of the federal ARPA funds and how the county approaches that? So how do you approach a long-term worst-case contingency planning?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, using the ARPA example, that is a long-term phase-out. So we are looking at, like with ARPA funds, it's three years out that we started planning as to how to phase that out, because we wanted to, instead of an ARPA cliff, we wanted to be an ARPA gently sloping hill so that the Maricopa County residents are being served and it'll have a minimal impact. So any contingency planning that we would do is generally on a long-term view. It's not done in the short term.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Zach. All right, Kirsten.
All right, next slide, please. The Sheriff's Office General Fund Operating Budget of $146.2 million is 10.4 million or 6.7% lower than the fiscal year '25 revised budget. The budget is lower due to the PSPRS Employee Retirement Contribution Rate decreasing from 46.13% to 25.98%. This resulted in savings of $11.1 million. New funding of $1.7 million is included in the FY '26 operating budget for technology license and maintenance, annual contract increases, and vehicle repairs and maintenance. The General Fund Nonrecurring Budget includes new funding of $3.5 million for replacement of the Axon servers and interview rooms, data storage, a new uninterrupted power supply battery, dispatch and data center upgrades, digital scanning of paper records, and radios for new vehicles.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd just been told that our video got cut out, and I don't see Supervisor Lesko. Do we have an issue with video and especially Supervisor Lesko's feed?
Okay, but.
Just cut her camera.
Okay, but are there also, I'm also hearing from people who are not able to access our video outside. Do we know, are we aware of any issue regarding that? There is an issue? Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor Lesko, just want to check, can you're able to hear and see us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Kirsten, sir, about that.
Yeah, I'm fine. Okay.
In the Equipment Services Budget is $2.45 million for 10 trucks for Lakeland Patrol and 15 patrol vehicles. Contingency of $4.9 million has been set aside for MCOSO's request to purchase an airplane. The adjustment for the compensation pay plan is pending. Next slide. The Compliance Operating Budget is recommended at $34.4 million. One-time funding of $752,000 is for funding approved in a prior year for the Professional Standards Bureau moving costs that is being carried forward into fiscal year '26. Next slide, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, and I'm gonna be speaking to this as well. Supervisor Stewart. You go first then.
No, no, go ahead.
We're on the same.
Go ahead.
Is this the Melendez case?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, yes, that is correct. This is the cost for the Melendez case that are within the Sheriff's Office budget. There are also costs beyond that if we want to go to the next slide, which includes the total for the past 18 years.
Does that say 352 million?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, yes, that is correct.
Wow, that's a lot of airplanes. Thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, and then I have some comments after you're done with this slide.
Okay. So this slide shows the total cost of Melendez by category over the years. Through fiscal year '24, the county has spent $273.9 million. The estimated FY '25 spending is $38.1 million, and FY '26 budget is $40.6 million, bringing the total to $352.6 million over the past 18 years. As shown in the chart, the top three costs are spending within the Sheriff's Office, monitor and related costs, and plaintiff attorneys.
Thank you. All right, so $352 million over 18 years over a lawsuit that was filed almost 20 years ago, four sheriffs ago, is just a staggering sum. It's just staggering. And then when you look at $34.4 million for the operating budget for this year, after the fourth order, after the voters have selected new sheriffs over and over and over again, and I have to believe due to attrition and turnover, that we have a completely different department than we did 18 years ago. And first of all, I want the folks in our Sheriff's Office to know that we support them, all of them, the deputies, the detention officers, the dispatchers, because they have to work under these conditions. And say what you will about the original lawsuit and the facts that generated that lawsuit, but now I don't understand the justification of why a federal monitor is saying that the Board of Supervisors have to appropriate $34 million in compliance costs. And everyone here sitting in this room, everyone here watching, is spending that money. When I go out in the community, I tell people, you are paying for this. And so one of the things that the board did at the beginning of January is that we're looking at legal options on behalf of the board, and we've engaged with a constitutional law expert, because I believe at some point someone has to ask, can we just keep doing this? Why do we have to keep doing this? And I hate when someone just says, there's nothing you can do about it. So this board is really trying to do something about it. And I just want to say that having to spend $34 million in compliance costs on a 20-year-old lawsuit does not benefit this law enforcement agency, does not benefit this county, does not benefit residents, and does not benefit small businesses. There's other ways that we can go about doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Stewart. First of all, thank you so much for outlining that the way you did. I think it's egregious at this point. You know, the reality remains for the taxpayer is that this money could be used for training, it could be used for hiring, it could be used for equipment to ensure that the men and women of our Sheriff's Department and our detention centers come home every night from work. And unfortunately, we're in an 18-year, I'll just call it a fleece in many ways, of taxpayer dollars in order to do, in order to pay for things that we have taken care of. We are 99.9% of the way in compliance. We are 99.9% of the way in compliance. The goalposts keep moving every time we get close, and it just needs to stop. So I really am grateful for you bringing this up, and I'm really grateful for the board, the sheriff, and anyone else that can help us elevate this conversation in order to save the taxpayer dollar and to continue to invest in the men and women of our law enforcement. Thank you.
Next slide. The Sheriff's Office Detention Fund Operating Budget of $271.9 million is 10.1 million or 3.6% lower than the FY '25 budget. The budget is lower due to the corp employer retirement contribution rate decreasing from 24.13% to 12.85%. This resulted in savings of $15.3 million. The Detention Fund Non-Recurring Budget is recommended at $1.4 million, and the budget adjustment for the compensation pay plan is pending. Next slide. The Treasurer's Office General Fund Operating Budget of $9.9 million is an increase of $327,000 or 3.4% above the FY '25 budget. The FY '26 budget includes new funding of $250,000 for positions that are currently built to their project to upgrade their system. The system is expected to go live in fiscal year '26, and the staff are needed for technology support and maintenance. Next slide. The Correctional Health General Fund Operating Budget of $4.1 million, an increase of $467,000 or 12.7% above the FY '25 budget, is for provider and medication costs for individuals in the Restoration to Competency Unit. The Detention Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $85.4 million, an increase of $3 million or 3.64% above the fiscal year '25 revised budget. The budget includes new funding of $1.1 million to ensure there is adequate nurse staffing hours in the jails and pharmaceuticals and medical supplies due to rising costs. The Detention Fund Non-Recurring Budget is recommended at $1.2 million and includes funding for contract nursing staff to cover high-volume periods at the ITR pre-screening area.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Is the choice of contract staffing, nursing staff, knowing that they're much more expensive than ongoing, is that intentional because of the one-time nature?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, yes, it was intentional to use contract nursing staff because it is a very difficult area for correctional health to staff, and it has been creating a backlog in the ITR pre-screening area. So they have been given one-time funding for a pilot program to see how it works because they are guaranteed staff to show up with contract nurses.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor.
Supervisor Lesko.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. That last item of having the contract nurse, am I understanding this to be when you book people into the jail? Is that the health assessment that they get, that the inmates get?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, that is correct. It is the initial health assessment that someone receives when they are booked into our county jail.
Well, I've had a couple city police officers tell me that it takes so long to book people that they bring in to the county jails that the police officer, instead of getting back to his city, has to wait there with the inmate for the inmate to be booked. And I think, if memory serves me, one of the reasons was this health assessment. First of all, is that your understanding? And will the addition of these contract nurses then reduce the amount of time that the city police officers have to wait until the inmate is booked into jail?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, the one portion of the booking process is the health assessment. And the idea is that these contract nurses can help speed up the assessment. Another issue is that we have a very specified list of things that we have to do as part of that assessment based on the settlement from a court case. So that does take a little bit longer, which is why we're looking at different staffing models to speed that up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next slide. The Elections General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $14.2 million. The FY '26 budget includes new funding for constituent services positions, onsite tabulation positions, IT-related items, including a new campaign finance system, licensing for a public records system, and the ballot-on-demand printers annual licensing costs. In addition, funding was included for two additional tabulators at each voting location for onsite tabulation of early ballots. The Elections portion of the primary and general election cycle budget is recommended at $8.6 million. The funding is for the primary election in 2026, including costs for staffing, poll workers, printing, mailing, and postage costs, and vote center supplies and services costs. The total budget for both offices is $13.8 million.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like staff to go over the ballot-on-demand printers. How many are we getting? And what brand are they?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, the ballot-on-demand printers, it's my understanding that they are Lexmark printers purchased by Runback. And I don't know the exact number of tabulators because it was dependent on voting sites, but I understand it's two per voting locations that there's a backup.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, it's 550.
All right. Thank you very much for that information. And so that I totally understand this, and the public totally understands it, is the reason that we need these additional printers is because state law changed a while ago that would allow voters, if they so choose, to present their ID on Election Day instead of just dropping off their mail-in ballot envelope. Is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, that is correct.
Okay, good. And I'm glad that we're doing, thinking of the Lexmark printers because in 2022, if my memory serves me correctly, it was the Oki printers that had problems. And then we switched to Lexmark, and since then, we haven't had those same problems. Is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, that is correct.
Thank you, and I yield back.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Stewart. On the printers, not a, kind of brought back a memory, will there be any backup? So you have, so we could use two in each location at the same time if it's busy. Will there be five sitting in the warehouse that we can roll out to a location? Let's say we do our QC the week before and one of them's fried. Will we be able to roll one out? Do we have that type of contingency plan?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, yes. And in fact, we staff each location with multiple printers, usually three, so that we could have two rolling with one backup.
Okay.
And then we have locations throughout the county where we can deploy printers to locations that need to switch printers out in case something happens to one of the printers on Elections Day quickly. And so we have backups ready to go as well as printers onsite that can be replaced.
How does that, that's great. So how does that work? Do you just have them in a van and they're ready to go? And how do you do the QC at the spot, like before you plug them in? Is there a QC onsite or before they go?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer the first question first. We have receiving sites throughout the county for major elections. And so those sites have extra supplies and printers and machines when necessary. And so those get deployed out to locations that they're closest to. And then when we set up vote centers, we do a print when we, a test print when we set up the vote center. And then we also do test prints every morning that we are serving voters at a location so that we can know if the printer is behaving properly at that moment.
Okay. Sounds like we got a plan. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While Zach's there, I'm going to ask him a question so that I make sure I understand and the public understands. So these printers, the new printers that are being proposed, are going to be used on Election Day, and they're going to be used for voters who requested a mail-in ballot, did not mail back their mail-in ballot, and instead are showing up on Election Day. And instead of putting it into a drop box, which they could do, state law allows them, does not mandate the voter, but allows them to instead stand in a different line than the Election Day voters, take the ballot out of their envelope, and put it through these new tabulators. Am I understanding it correctly?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Lesko, yes, with one point of clarification. This budget request does not ask for more printers. That is just the maintenance to the existing increase in Lexmark printers that we had in a previous budget. But the extra tabulators that we are requesting in this budget does go to that effort, Supervisor Lesko. And that's correct. It is for folks who will stand, it will be the same line. And then after check-in, they will go to a separate area to tabulate that late early ballot that would previously have been dropped off in the envelope.
And thank you, Mr. Chair and Zach. And they have to be in a separate line? And explain to me why they have to be a separate line from the Election Day voters?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, we're currently developing guidelines with the Recorder's Office and the Secretary of State on this issue. But what we're currently going to propose is that it's one line for voters to check in so that we can use the full scale of all of our check-in stations. And then at that point, after check-in, you would go into a line to vote a new ballot and have it tabulated onsite. And then you'd go to a separate line to remove your late early drop-off ballot and have that tabulated onsite so that we can maintain chain of custody. The separate lines helps us administer the protocol, the security portion of our system that does not allow for double voting between early ballots and day-of ballots.
And Mr. Chair and Mr. Shira, is this a new thought process? Because I thought, maybe mistakenly, in the past, you were going to have a separate line because the ballot that's in the mail-in envelope is a different format or size or something like that than the Election Day ballot. Am I not remembering that correctly? And so now you're thinking of replacing the mail-in ballot. Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, no. What we're thinking of doing is having one check-in line. Because what you don't want to do is you don't want to split your check-in stations in half and have a lot of demand for in-person voting and not a lot of demand for drop-off voting and tabulation, and then have a choke point because you're not using all of the resources you have. So we're proposing one check-in line. And then from there, you would be split. You would still keep the ballot that you voted at home and put in your envelope. And you would then go into the separate line that you're thinking of to tabulate that early ballot onsite. And so it's after the check-in station that we're proposing splitting you into two lines so that we don't have a throughput issue when it comes to the check. You know, in-person voting is all about ensuring that you know where the choke points are in the process. And so you don't want to create an inadvertent choke point by reducing the number of check-in stations you have at your disposal.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple questions. What was the budget in 2022 for this? And the second question is, does this budget include the IT staff that's being put back underneath the Recorder's Office? Or is that in a separate line item in the Recorder's budget?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Stewart, I do not have the exact 2022 budget for elections, but I will send that to you after the presentation is completed. And then the IT staff were not added to the Elections budget. They were moved to our Enterprise Technology Department.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Hey, Kirsten.
Next slide. The Environmental Services General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $11.2 million, an increase of $113,000 or 1%. The General Fund Non-Recurring Budget includes one-time funding of $410,000 for maintenance on the Hossayampa landfill cap to manage drainage and erosion control. An additional $37,900 has been added to the vector control foggers budget due to the increased cost of yearly replacement of six foggers. Next slide. The Human Resources General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $10.8 million. The HR Systems Support Budget of $2 million includes additional funding of $943,000 for the Workday Talent Optimization Module for Employee Performance Management. The HR Systems Budget of $4.1 million includes $100,000 for the annual contract increases for the HR Systems. Next slide. The Medical Examiner General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $17.3 million and includes $85,000 for Administrative Staff Supervisor in the Admitting Section. The Medical Examiner Retention Budget is recommended at $325,000 and supports loan repayment and recruitment and retention efforts for medical examiners. The General Fund Non-Recurring Budget of $47,000 is the remaining funding of the Medical Examiner sign-on incentive that was approved in fiscal year '24. Next slide. The Parks and Recreation General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $1.3 million. One-time funding of $400,000 is for the Fire Fuel Reduction Program. Next slide. The Public Defense General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $174.5 million, an increase of $1 million or 3.27%. The FY '26 budget includes additional funding of $1.2 million. Legislation was signed this session to allow the boards to approve alternative rates for capital post-conviction relief cases. The rate was previously set at $100 in statute, and Public Defense is proposing a rate of $170 to align with first-chair capital trial attorneys. Next slide. The Public Fiduciary General Fund Operating Budget is recommended at $7.6 million, an increase of $1.6 million or 25.6%. The new funding in the FY '26 budget is for a staffing model to help with the high number of caseloads along with additional administrative support and a deputy director position. Next slide. That is the conclusion of the department's slides, and now I will go over the capital projects. The fiscal year '26 capital project budget is $452.7 million. The largest category of spending is general government at 34.34%. The general government category has moved up to first from second last year. The projects in this category include the Office Space Optimization Project, the Downtown Election Facility, and the Durango Campus Electrical Infrastructure Upgrade. The second largest category is public safety, which is typically the largest category of projects. Some of the categories in this project include MCSO substations in Cave Creek Anthem, Avondale, Mesa, and Surprise, the Central Court Building, and public safety radios. The next category is highway and streets for all transportation-related projects at 19.84%, followed by culture and recreation for all parks at 10%, and health, welfare, and sanitation projects at 9.04%, which are primarily the new animal care and control facilities and public health building. And I'll be showing the project detail on each of the next slides. Next slide. On each slide, we have the FY '26 project budget and the total project budget estimate. The total project budget is an estimate because these projects may change as parks are at different phases of the projects or different park locations. First, I'll go over the Parks and Recreation existing projects. The FY '26 budget for existing projects is $29 million. The total new funding is $9.9 million. Some projects that needed additional funding include campground development and improvement in McDowell Mountain Park to supply electricity, expansion of the Wildlife Trailhead to increase parking capacity, and establish a second separate area for equestrian parking at White Tank Regional Mountain Park, parking lot repairs at Estrella Mountain Park, and upgrading facilities and infrastructure to meet federal ADA standards. Next slide. Continuing with existing parks projects, additional funding was approved for the continuation of the development at the Gold Mine Trailhead at Santan Mountain Regional Park to enhance the visitor experience, and wastewater system improvements at Lake Pleasant, McDowell, and White Tank Parks. Next slide. There are four new projects in fiscal year '26. Parks will be modernizing and upgrading the electrical infrastructure of the Cave Creek Campground, installing a badge entry system for all park buildings accessed by staff. installing a badge entry system for all park buildings accessed by staff, upgrading the drinking water system at the McDowell Mountain Park and Paradise Valley Golf Course, and the White Tank Competitive Track infrastructure improvements. Next slide. The facilities' capital project budgets total 278.3 million in FY26. On this slide are existing facilities' capital projects. The four projects that received additional funding are the Downtown Election Facility, the Durango Campus Electrical Infrastructure Upgrade, Electrical Vehicle Chargers, and the Fuel Tank at McDowell Mountain Park. Next slide. Continuing with existing facilities' projects, the Office Space Optimization Project is the only project that received new funding in fiscal year '26. The board approved a small project budget of 2 million during fiscal year '25, and the total project budget was approved in fiscal year '26. Next slide. Final slide of facilities' existing capital projects. The only project on this slide to receive additional funding is for the Superior Court Camera Replacement Project. The project was previously funded with ARPA and 7.5 million is needed for completion. Next slide. In fiscal year '25, our office worked with facilities in the Innovation Studio to improve the capital improvement project approval process. Moving forward, facilities will first request a design budget for a proposed capital project. After design is completed, they will present the full cost of the project for approval. This improvement will allow the board to fully understand the cost of the project before approving the total budget. In fiscal year '26, we have five projects starting the design phase. 225 West Madison or the County Attorney Building HVAC Corrections, the MCSO Food Factory Interior Refresh, ITR Expansion Sallyport and Pedestrian Bridge Crossing, Jail Security Systems Upgrade and Replacement, and the Southwest Justice Center Expansion. The Central Court Building is being remodeled two floors at a time, and the eighth floor is the next floor that will start the design phase. The 12.7 million is the current total estimated cost for the floor. Next slide. The Technology Capital Project Budgets total 31.4 million in FY26 for existing and new projects. The only new project is the radio simulcast migration at 4.2 million. This project will upgrade the radio system to ensure readiness and support for Motorola's new system release. Additional funding of 5.7 million was added to the Public Safety Radio Refresh Project for the refresh and modernization of subscriber radios over the next seven years. Next slide. That is the conclusion of our presentation today on the Maricopa County Budget. Finally, some of the upcoming dates are the adoption of the tentative budget today. If approved, then final budget adoption on June 23rd. The property tax levy adoption will be on the third Monday in August on the 18th. We would like to thank the County Manager and the Chairman's Office for their guidance as we work to prepare the budget for this next fiscal year. We would also like to thank our staff for their dedicated efforts and hours to get this budget finalized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments at this point?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you. You know, you opened up this meeting with kind of a, sharing your thoughts about fiscal responsibility and looking at everything with a fine-tooth comb, which I can absolutely tell that you all have in the meetings that we've had today and then previously. We appreciate that the work you're doing. This is very thorough, really helps us understand how we're moving forward and how we can continue to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, no, not, not any questions, but thank you to our entire team, finance team. It has worked. I know how much work goes in to putting this all together. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership in bringing this budget in front of us today.
Thank you. Supervisor Lesko, any questions or comments?
No, I thought it was a thorough presentation. Plus, I had followed up with budget staff on individual questions I didn't ask today. They got back to me, so I told the budget folks, Kirsten and Mike, that they have an interesting job because I'm sure when the, every department wants to be nice to them because they're asking for money, but when they don't get the money that they asked, where they probably don't like them for a while. And so kind of a tough gig, although I used to be Appropriations Chair in the State Senate, so I understand. People would either love me or hate me. So, good job, staff.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Again, I'd like to share my thanks. I had some, and continue to have some last-minute follow-ups on individual pieces of the budget that I didn't understand. And you have all this going on and you got back to me. And you got good information for me and for my staff, and it will help with my vote on the budget. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for the presentation and thank you for staff for adding some color to some of the questions here today. I have to tell you that, serving as chairman this year, the biggest highlight is working with you on this budget. When you become chairman, you really get to see the inside of how it all put together. And just to see how you guys are very deliberate and very prepared and very well researched on every single line item of the budget. It doesn't surprise me, but it's really nice to see. And also, the way that a budget is constructed, right off the bat, 19% of this budget is mandated by state spending. And then we have to carry out all of the other responsibilities for elected officials and for appointed officials. So I also want to highlight the leadership of our County Manager, Jen Mikorsky, and our four amazing assistant county managers. And also how this board has been a pleasure to work with as we've worked through this five, six-month-long process. And so you take what you're supposed to spend, and then you look at how you're going to spend it efficiently and wisely. And then you come up with a number, and you're also having two months in contingency. And that reveals that we're once again cutting the overall tax rate, which I think is phenomenal. And I just want to congratulate this board because, to me, that's very important. And it highlights the fiscal responsibility, the good stewardship of this county, this board. And I know that I was very proud on the first budget that I voted on, that it was cutting tax rates. And I'm extremely proud that every single budget I voted on has cut those rates, and now we're doing it yet again. And it's not guaranteed, but we're also doing it in a responsible way. And instead of putting the cart in front of the horse and saying to you, hey, cut the rate and let's figure out a way to get there, it just shows that the entire county of 15,000 people are working well together. And also shows that a board that effectively works as a board of directors is working really well with the people who know their stuff, the subjectmatic experts and the folks who run this county on a day-to-day basis. So, short answer, I'm just really proud of everyone, really proud of what we have here before us, and really appreciate both of you and your team for the hard work. And it's just been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider item number three. Is there a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2026 Maricopa County tentative budget?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2026 Maricopa County tentative budget in the amount of 3 million, 3 billion. Let me back up. Of 3 billion, 955,121,599 by total appropriation for each department fund and appropriation unit group listed in the attached schedules. I further move that the board also adopt the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2026 to 2030. And I further move the board approve the attached executive summary.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four. Set public hearing, truth and taxation hearing, and special meeting on Maricopa County fiscal year 2026 budget. The board will now consider item number four. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we set the public hearing on the budget, the truth and taxation hearing, and a special meeting for June 23rd, 2025, at the time and location outlined in the agenda, and give notice that tax levies and tax rates will be set by this board Monday, August 18th, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gauder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as Improvement District Board of Directors. The documents regarding these districts are included in the backup materials where each district is listed along with the associated direct assessment or estimated tax rate. So item number five is adoption of the fiscal year 2026 tentative budgets for direct assessment special districts and street lighting improvement districts. Item number six is set public hearing and special meeting on fiscal year 2026 budget for direct assessment special districts and street lighting improvement districts. The board will now consider items five and six. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2026 tentative budgets for all of the special districts and improvement districts as described in the agenda and per the budget requests as listed on the attachment. I further move that we set the public hearing on the budgets along with a special meeting for June 23rd, 2025, as outlined and described in the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn as the Improvement District Board of Directors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors to consider the tentative budget and set hearing dates for the adoption of the final budget. Kirsten, you will now present to us the Flood Control District budget.
The Flood Control District, can you go to the next slide, please? The Flood Control District fiscal year '26 expenditures total 105.1 million. The fiscal year '26 capital improvement program budget totals 63.7 million, and the five-year plan is projected to be 259.4 million. The proposed truth and taxation rate of .1428 results in a property tax levy of 80.8 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lesko.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kirsten, could you please tell the public what the budget increase is from last year? And I understand that the tax rate will decrease. Is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, yes, that is correct. The prior year FY25 budget was 103.6 million, and FY26 budget is 105.1 million, which is an increase of 1.5 million or 1.44%. We are utilizing the truth and taxation rate in fiscal year '26, which is a tax decrease from fiscal year '25 when it was .1470. So the tax rate is decreasing by .0042.
Thank you very much. I think it's important for the constituents to know that on these as well, we are reducing the tax rate.
That's right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, okay. Kirsten, your presentation is done, I assume? Okay, thank you. Short and sweet, thank you. The board will now consider items eight and nine, which include the adoption of the Flood Control tentative budget and the hearings related to final adoption of the budget. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2026 Flood Control District tentative budget in the amount of 105,794 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the Flood Control District. And I further move that we set the public hearing on the budget and a special meeting for June 23rd, 2025, as outlined and described in the agenda for the Flood Control District.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gauder. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Under Library District, we will adjourn as the Flood Control Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors to consider the tentative budget and set hearing dates for the adoption of the final budget. Kirsten Prindle will present on the Library District budget.
The Library District FY26 expenditures total 37.1 million. The FY26 capital improvement program budget totals 11.9 million. The proposed truth and taxation rate of .0462 results in a property tax levy of 28.1 million. The Library District tax rate is also going down from .047 last year to .0462 this year.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, the board will now consider items 11 and 12, which include the adoption of the Library District tentative budget and the hearings related to final adoption of the budget. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2026 Library District tentative budget in the amount of 48,995,617 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the Library District. And I further move we set the public hearing on the budget and a special meeting for June 23rd, 2025, as outlined and described in the agenda for the Library District.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors to consider the tentative budget and set hearing dates for the adoption of the final budget. Kirsten Prindle will present on the Stadium District budget.
The Stadium District expenditures total 9.8 million, with 9.5 million of that paid to the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority from the car rental surcharge revenue. The remaining 250,000 is for audit charges and the central service cost allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? None. Okay, the board will now consider items 14 and 15, which include the adoption of the Stadium District tentative budget and the hearings related to final adoption of the budget. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we approve the Stadium District fiscal year 2026 tentative budget in the amount of 9,750,000 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the Stadium District. I further move that we set the public hearing on the budget and a special meeting for June 23rd, 2025, as outlined and described in the agenda for the Stadium District.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gauder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will now adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. The board will now consider item number 16, which is executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the board convene an executive session for the purpose of seeking legal advice.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gauder. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. I just want to thank my colleagues on the board for their tremendous leadership on this budget item. Thank you all. Have a great day.